I'm sorry. Thank you.
Ms. Morgan?
He's at the light of Colonial.
Oh, well then let's just sit tight.
Okay. We can do that.
What did he say? Ready to resume this morning's special board meeting. This meeting's agenda includes public comment and one item under superintendent's recommendation. Board members, is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
This is Fisher, second by Mr. Toiber. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes 6-0. The next item on the agenda is public comment. Mr. Martin, please address the agenda item of public comment.
School board policy provides the opportunity at this point in the meeting to address the board concerning any matter on this meeting's agenda or any other matter relevant to the operation of the school district. If you completed a card and submitted that to me before the meeting began, you'll be called in the order of the cards submitted. If you did not submit a card but still wish to address the school board this evening, this morning, the school board chair, Ms. Morgan, will provide you an opportunity and moment to express that desire. The rules concerning public comment are posted at the back of the room. The board does not respond during public comment time to remarks made by speakers. At the conclusion of public comment time, the school board chair may address concerns raised by speakers or may assign responsibility to the superintendent to do so. Speakers are expected to act in a respectful manner. Those who fail to do so after being warned by the meeting chair may be required to leave the meeting. Disruptive attacks on individuals are prohibited. Ms. Morgan, I have five cards this morning.
Thank you. Is there anyone on the right side of the auditorium who wishes to address the board who did not fill out a card? On the left side? Seeing that, Mr. Martin, would you please call the first card?
Mark Castellano.
Good morning, Dr. Atkins, board members. I am Mark Castellano. I am president of the Teachers Association of Lee County. I just wanted to let you know that last week, our executive board voted unanimously to support the half-cent sales tax referendum. We were hoping it would be on a special election in May. We believe that would be the most effective way for us to do that, but we understand that there's some pushback in certain areas against doing that, but in any incarnation of this, we will support it. Thank you.
Thank you.
William Tubb.
Good morning, Ms. Morgan, board members, Dr. Atkins, Mr. Martin. My name is Bill Tubb, and I'm here to speak to thank you for your service to the children of Lee County and for trying to do what was right for them regardless of the political consequences. I know your intentions in proposing the special election to allow, was to allow a clear, concise discussion with the voters of Lee County about the needs of the children of Lee County and how they want to pay for their schools. Unfortunately, with those with political agendas, in their hearts, have worked to make the referendum the issue rather than the children's needs. So I support your moving this referendum to November to remove the possibility of that being the issue that the voters hear about rather than the needs of the children. Between the letters to the editor and the shenanigans by the, those in Tallahassee, this discussion would not happen in May, so I appreciate what you're doing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jim Hawk.
Good morning to the board. You guys get up early. All but Steve, I guess. I was relaxed, laid back on the couch two weeks ago, watching TV, and I heard the news. And I felt like I was punched in the gut. I almost threw up. Then I felt like I was having a heart attack, and I told my wife, "I know you've asked me to stay out of politics, but I have to jump in this. I have to for my own sanity." So I jumped right in, and it's been amazing, just like last time, 18 years ago. The opposition is organic, it's spontaneous, and it's powerful. We already have, I can't show you this, or I'll go to jail. We have bumper stickers that say "Ax the Tax." We have a beautiful video, a slick, well-produced video on YouTube. I've had dozens of people emailing me. I'm emailing the commissioners, I'm emailing everybody I know that was active 20 years ago that's still alive. A couple of my friends have died in the...
Mr. Hawk, hold on for just a second. Please turn on the microphone for the speaker. Let's try again.
Well, I'm gonna have to start over. You gonna reset the clock?
You have a minute and 46 seconds. Proceed.
That's not fair. You were fine for a while, and then the microphone cut out.
Yeah, we heard you.
But you know, this is, the only, the only...
That.
Thank you, sir. You may proceed. Your time has begun. Your time is ticking. Go ahead. Time has begun. Proceed.
Okay. Relaxed. And I'm so upset that I knew I had to take action. I got on the computer, started shooting out emails, I wrote letters to the editor. Called the local TV stations. So the opposition has already formed. If you remember last time around, the tax, the first tax went down 82 percent in '17. The second tax, the half-cent, on off-year election just like this, went down 67. Thirty-three. What I'm asking you to do, instead of moving into November, is to just drop it. Save yourselves the embarrassment. A little bit of embarrassment now is better than a lot of embarrassment over the next six months. And I have full confidence in my fellow citizens, because like I said, the commissioners have been able to, they have special files for the people that are angry with the sales tax. So the solution, this school vouchers, and school vouchers have been around for 30 years. They're catching on. Indiana has the best school voucher program in the country. And it's gonna show the rest of us how to do this. If we embrace the free market, if we get government out of the schooling business, if, we, we can only imagine what will happen. I know the cost will go down to probably about half of what they cost now. I know that the results will be better. Schools will be smaller. They'll be more adaptable. They'll be more creative, innovative. This is the future. We can try to postpone it, or we can embrace it. The only real resistance is the teaching unions. The teaching unions are now the most powerful labor union in the country and the most powerful lobby in the country. And everybody is afraid that they'll lose their jobs. No one will lose their jobs. The teachers will just move to private schools. The bus drivers will move to private schools. The janitors will move to private schools. It's a win for everybody except the unions. Mark Castellano is the only person who's gonna lose his job. Now, I have a letter from Christine Patrino.
Thank you, Mr. Hawk. Your time's up, sir. Your time is up. Thank you. Thank you, sir. Your time is up. Louis Navara?
I have to go. I don't wanna be rude, but I need to go. Thank you so much.
We need to take another recess? Okay. Board members, we need to take another recess. Five minutes, please. We are continuing to have problems with the microphones and the technology, so we're gonna take a five-minute recess. And it's 8:25, and we're going to try to resume this morning's meeting. Apparently, there, there was a lightning strike that affected our equipment, so everything's been rebooted, and we're gonna give it another shot. Mr. Martin, would you call the next speaker, please?
Navara?
Is it working? No?
I don't think so, yeah. You'll need to start over.
Yeah.
Just a minute.
It's not working.
It's not working?
I cannot turn it on.
We can hear using your mic?
Okay.
Can you just use that? Can you use this, sir? Where do you want me to begin here? Stand here?
Good morning, Dr. Atkins, school board members, Lou Navara, Cape Coral, 46-year-retired teacher, many years in Lee County as a resident. Wanted to thank you for the three-minute rule that you did the other day. I think you should keep that, and I think you should also expand it to your workshops. City Cape Coral does that, but seems like the county commission and the school board does not allow input at Cal meetings, as they call it in Cape Coral. I wanted to bring up, you know Kenny Rogers, you gotta know when to hold 'em and know when to fold 'em? Good song. This is a regressive tax. You need to fold it, even for November, because it's just not a fair tax to the hard-working citizens. We've been over this, minorities, et cetera. I suggest we all go down to the county commission, Mar, because they won't let us speak at 1:30 at their Cal meeting or their workshop, and tell them, raise the impact fees. Now, I know you said that's not gonna cover enough, but this looks like a wish list to me. Forty-five million for athletic equipment, 72 million for computer density, whatever that is. Let's go back to the commission and get the impact fees up where they should be. But I also saw some memos here on our school news, because I still substitute teach and I could work every day, but I haven't. And it's from Lauren Stillwell, and it says she wants to share a website. I don't think that's ethical, that Mr. Hawk will want a website to be against a tax cut. I also noticed a letter from the superintendent. Now, I know this is a gray area. You can complain to the Tallahassee about ethics. Tallahassee, I'm tired of them running our lives. I agree with you there. They seem to be taking over, but I just don't think that's fair. And I do have the copies, in case you wanna see them. I guess that's about it. I think... I think, though, we should work other avenues and forget this tax. Obviously, the state didn't even want you to pull the May election, because it's true. Light voter turnout, everybody shows up to want to vote for it. We'll find it in November ballot. We're not stupid people. If it's at the end, we'll find it. But I don't think you should even waste the time. I agree with Mr. Hawke, who was here before. Thank you, board. Thank you, Dr. Atkins.
Thank you, Mr. Martin.
Dr. Joseph Doyle?
It's still not going to work? Yeah, I don't know.
Neither one is working?
None of them work? No.
Good morning, Madam Chair and school board members. I am Dr. Joseph Doyle. I am from Naples. And I heard about this meeting at 5:00 this morning when I got up and I had the news on, and I just said, "We're dropping everything and coming up here." I have a couple of problems with this half-ascent sales tax. First of all, I'd like to congratulate you on moving it to the general election and not spending nearly $900,000 for a special referendum. But that being said, I'm still against the sales tax, and I'll tell you why. The sales tax would be okay if it was for basic, essential infrastructure, bridges, roads, et cetera. This is for the schools. Now, those of us who pay the sales tax, sales tax, 30% of us will be paying it. We don't even live in Lee County, get any benefit from it, from the schools. And I live, we live in North Naples, so I calculated on the way up, all the restaurants that we patronize in Lee County, Benita Springs. I've purchased several vehicles over the years here. I probably spend, when I don't buy a vehicle, about $20,000 a year in your county. But I don't want it going to the schools. I don't mind paying for the roads, the traffic lights, the streetlights. I use those. I'm getting a benefit from it. You missed an opportunity to raise your impact fees about two years ago, when Collier County raised theirs. That's money that you've lost. Well, unfortunately, that's too bad. I also have an MBA and a master's of public administration, so I know a little bit about finance, and I know a little bit about taxation policy. So, I agree with the two previous gentlemen. You need to fold this and go to something that's more equitable, but certainly not this sales tax. And as far as the impact, for me, $20,000, the tax on $20,000 is not so bad. But your little old ladies just got a cost-of-living adjustment, 2% from Social Security. Most of that went to their Medicare premiums. So, now you're asking them to pay more out of their cost of living. They're going to have to give up a pizza or a tank of gas every month. I don't think that's right. So, I think you really need to go back to the drawing board and not implement this half-ascent sales tax. Thank you.
Thank you to all the speakers who made comment to the board this morning. Dr. Atkins, would you please read your recommendation?
I will. At this time, I recommend the school board adopt a replacement resolution to place the school sales tax referendum on the November 6, 2018, general election ballot.
Board members, you've heard the superintendent's recommendation that the board adopt a resolution, a replacement resolution to place the school sales tax referendum on the November 6, 2018, general election ballot. Is there a motion to approve? So moved by Mrs. Fisher.
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Giovinelli. Board members, is there discussion? Ms. Patrica.
Yeah, I have three observations that I want to share, if that's okay. The first is that there has been clear pushback from the public regarding a special election. The overwhelming majority of people who reached out to me did not want a special election. They want this referendum put on the November ballot. At the same time, the overwhelming majority of people who have reached out to me have expressed support for the underlying tax. Goal two of Vision 2020 is to increase community engagement, family and community engagement. And I don't know how we increase family and community engagement if we don't listen to them when they're reaching out to us en masse and asking us to put this on a November ballot. So, the second observation I have is that the Board of County Commissioners will not agree to a special election. Dr. Atkins and I met with Commissioners Pendergrass, Hammond, and Manning, and we each separately met with Commissioner Mann, and I believe you and Mr. Toiber met with Commissioner Kiker.
Just me.
Oh, okay. And there was very little support for a special election. The bottom line is, we really, really, really want to work with our commissioners going forward, and most of them also expressed an understanding of our capital need. My final observation is that our legislature will almost certainly pass legislation that will force all local tax referendums onto a November ballot. The interesting thing about this specific piece of legislation is that the amendment was not underlined. Typically, amendments to bills are underlined, so as to draw the attention of the reader to those changes. This was not underlined. Also, typically, bills become effective in July. This one is effective immediately, and my understanding is that that is very rare for state law in Florida. So, all of that leads me to believe that there is a need for a local solution here. We simply do not have state support for building, buildings for our students, for building schools for our students. So, I think we have our work cut out for us for the next several months as a board, getting out there and spreading the word about the underlying need. But I'm also very confident, given the feedback we've been given from the community, that they will support our efforts. So, for those reasons, I will be supporting the superintendent's recommendation this morning.
Other comments? Mr. Toiber?
Thank you, board. And I apologize for being a little late. I was put on hold on the AM radio station, and I couldn't leave my house until I finished the conversation. And I felt it very important, because there was, on the AM radio, they had talked about this meeting today, and Mr. Caldwell, Representative Caldwell, actually came on the radio to refute the letter that we wrote on Friday that the board submitted to the editorial page because of their letter. And this goes back and forth. And basically, I felt it was important to be there on the radio, because it is clear that there are state legislatures up in Tallahassee that are working very, very hard to thwart the efforts to fund public education. The efforts, you know, started with House Bill 7069, when they actually are taking not just the money that we have, but to tell us how to spend it, thinking that they know better than local control on how to do the funding in Lee County. And that was very, very clear when we had our federal money that was unfettered by the state. It was, it came from the federal government, and our district actually applied it appropriately, and we brought schools up several grades based upon how we did it locally. We have the solutions on how to solve the problems we have in Lee County. So, when it came to the point, when they took away capital in 2007, 2008, and again, it seems to be a misnomer when they start talking about swaps and the way the money's being taken. But it's clear, and the evidence proves to the fact, that in 2007, we gave a quarter mil of our tax, our capital funding to the state legislature, not moving to our operating. It was taken and put into the general reserve for everybody to use. That is, the hospitals, that is, the higher education, that is, our Medicaid, you know, all the Florida programs within the state of Florida to balance the budget. In 2008, another quarter mil was taken from us. Again, that two mil never was taken away from the taxpayers in the state of Florida. They're still paying two mils. It's just 1.5 of it now goes directly to public education to fund capital. Point five of it goes to the general revenue. We get funded on the operating side from the general revenue based on a funding formula, which is a very complex formula, but we don't see that. That 0.5 didn't translate into our funding formula. It went to the general revenue, and it was, and the general funding formula was completely untouched those two years and subsequent years. So, for people to say that money was moved from capital to operating is strictly not true. Now, in 2011, when Senator, when Representative Caldwell actually was there, they took 0.15 of our capital and gave it to the operating for a one-time switch. So, the issue, the fact that we, they have said, you know, they'll give it back to us, they'll do a swap back, all those things are patently false. What they offer to do is to take 0.5 out of our operating and move it to our capital. But that's now taking 0.5 away from the classrooms, directly to our funding of our operation side. That doesn't help us. So, we have asked continually, every single year, for a 0.5, and I felt it was very important for the taxpayers to understand that those truths can't be abated. And the fact that now, you know, with 7069, they directed more categoricals, and if you can see the current legislature, they're even adding two more categoricals to our funding formula, again, restricting us, restricting us, and restricting us. We've tried in 2007. We asked for less money. We actually asked you for 10% less money, and all they had to do was get rid of all the categoricals. In other words, give us the money, let local control decide how we apply the money, and we could make it happen. They don't want to do that. They want to keep the control in Tallahassee. So, here's another situation. So, that only leaves us now with four different possible ways that we can fund our capital side. We can raise property tax, which, again, has to go to the taxpayers to vote, and we raise property tax. We can go to the taxpayers and ask for a sales tax, for a 0.5 sales tax. Number three is, we can borrow more money. And number four is, we just do what we can do, put more kids in the classrooms, because we don't have seats to put them in new schools, put them on older buses, and figure out the way we can do it, the best way possible, which Avenue Number Four is the worst possible solution, because, again, every time we spend for equipment that's dilapidated, that's already beyond its useful life, we spend more money in operating. So, not only are we making poor decisions with the capital, the very little that we have, we are now forced to make poor decisions with our operating, because we're not spending money efficiently with proper maintenance. So, COPS is another way. And you heard our state legislature say, "Well, we are one of the lowest debt ratio school districts," so they can borrow more money. Just because we can doesn't mean we should. For a fiscally responsible school district, we have chose not to borrow money. We don't want to borrow money if we don't have to, but that's another solution that we'll be forced to do if we have to. So, we figured the best solution was to do, was to give, one of the two ways that we could actually raise the money was to go to a sales tax. We believe the best way to do that was to leave, to be able, because of all these complex issues, was to do it on a special election. And I was supportive of that, and I still, I still have the conversations with all my constituents to say why I supported that issue. But it seemed like it doesn't matter what, whether it makes reason or not, people could not get beyond the fact that we have to spend a tenth of a percent of the money that we need to be able to get that educated information out in a timely manner, not with all the other things that are going to start occurring, starting in August, for the general election. I agree with Ms. Patrica in the sense that everybody that comes to me said, you know, most people, some of them won't even listen to the argument, whether we need the sales tax or not, but the ones that do say, "Steve, I get it, but I just can't get beyond the sales tax being on a special election." So, it becomes unequivocal to me that the change is unequivocal. It becomes completely evident to me that for us to have a chance to be able to talk to our taxpayers and give them the reasons and the facts why we need a half-cent sales tax is we have to have it in the general election to get away from the issue that seems that everybody seems can't get behind. So, I appreciate the chair and the superintendent bringing it forward to us. I will be supporting to move it on the general election. I feel it's going to be very, very difficult, but I believe that's the hands we've been dealt, and we will do it. We will get the information out, and we will show everybody that this is the best financial decision that the school district can make, and we hope that the community will support us.
Thank you. Mrs. Fisher?
Thank you. The first thing I did was take the organizational chart and look at it. And smack at the top of our organizational chart is the public. Our public owns our public schools. They're interested in our public schools. They need our public schools for economic development and workforce development. I also was contacted by many people in my community, and I also reached out to a lot of the people who are active and involved in the community and are asking us for contributions to their workforce. People are looking for workers consistently. So, I kind of compiled what was told to me by these people who are in the workforce, who are leaders in the workforce, who are local government members. And I just want to share just a few of those comments, because I think that we are elected to represent the public, the best interest of the public. And that includes preparing our young people for the future leadership in this community. So, they're depending on us in a big way. So, one of the first comments that someone made to me was that the sales tax issue has garnered a lot of community attention. And yes, it has. We've been in the media, we've been on TV, and that's really a good thing, because it's bringing people's attention to it. And once we listen to our public and hear what their needs are and hear what their thoughts are, we can then respond to them and give them the facts about why we need this sales tax and why this, of all the options, is the best. The sales tax is not a soundbite issue. One person who has worked on bond referendums and has been in local government before said, "Take the 880,000 out of the equation." The special election was largely and almost unanimously unpopular with everyone I spoke to. People are likely to support the effort at the general election. And so, probably 99% of the people that I had an opportunity to speak with, and I spent hours doing this last week, said that they would support it during the general election and that they understand that the sales tax is good for a number of reasons. Everybody pays a little bit of it. Tourism pays for up to 30% of what we will garner each year. And we don't have to pay it back, so we aren't putting ourselves in more debt or incurring debt that we're going to saddle our successors with. They said to publicize the process fix and the accountability measures that happened with the Benita High School situation, because that has left a, you know, a bad impression with some people. And if they understand exactly what the process fixes are and the fact that we have made organizational changes to remedy that, that will be helpful. Everyone agrees that the governor and the legislature have cut taxes, but on the backs of local government, and that local government has not adequately published the long-term implications. So, we're in a bad, in a bad place, because we have made lots of efforts to be fiscally responsible. We've done a lot of cost-saving. However, people don't know about it, so this is our opportunity now to share those facts with our general public. And it's important for us, and I had some asterisks on this one, to get the key message to our larger grassroots audience. And we do have to continue to emphasize that education is responsible for future workforce and economic development in this community. So, I just wanted to share that that was what I heard from my constituents. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments?
For me, at this time, I'm not going to support the referendum because of the missteps in the process. I have heard from the voters, and I'm going to listen to them with their voice, and I'm going to vote no for the referendum.
Any other discussion? Mrs., Dr. Cuckel?
Yeah, I certainly agree with what my fellow board members have said and have heard very similar comments. I think that's pretty much across the county. And I just want to speak to it from a more practical standpoint. The fact of the matter is that we are growing by 1,800 or so students a year, and that's the equivalent of a high school a year. We have to build those schools. We have a responsibility of equitable education for all of our students, and they all need to be in classrooms and not overcrowded classrooms or portables. When we purchase portables to house them temporarily, then we double house them, because then we eventually have to have schools to house them as well. So, it's a double fee there. It doesn't make any sense whatsoever to not fund this upfront. When you don't fund the money for schools upfront, we know we have to house our students. When you don't fund upfront, you end up paying more in the end. One, the portables. One, the portables; the other, you pay interest on the money that you borrow. And that's not a good use of taxpayer money, as far as I'm concerned. It's a waste of taxpayer money, and I'm very embarrassed that our legislators would even suggest that. The figure comes out, too, this year, around $45 million in debt retirement, which essentially is mortgage payment, principal and interest. I think it's very sad that that amount of money is not going into our educational program, but yet paying interest to banks and money that we borrowed, that we shouldn't have borrowed to start with. So I am full bore for this, because I feel we owe the taxpayers the best use of their money, and borrowing money is not the best use of their money, from my perspective. Whether we have it in May or in November is the question today, and certainly, there's not a lot of support to have it in May, so I am going to support the motion today. And then, fellow Board members, we are educators. That's what we do well, and we can show the community that's what we do well. And now, our charge is to get out and let folks know the situation and where taxpayer money is going and how important it is to fund our schools upfront and not pay for them later, when it's a much more costly experience. So I'm happy to move it to November, because that even gives us more time to do what we do well.
Thank you. Mrs. Patrica?
I just have, again, if I could get consensus from the Board to have a conversation, because this is a special meeting, and we haven't been able to talk about this in a workshop or briefing. Is that okay? One of the things that I have noticed when I'm out in the public, and I mentioned this during our workshop, is I used to be a no-tax-under-any-circumstances voter, and I know that there are several people in the community who feel the same way, and when I have a conversation with them and I express, you know, $478 million need, and they say, "No tax, no tax," and I say, "What is the alternative solution?" I'd like to ask you and Melissa the same question. If you can't support this, do you have an alternative solution that this Board could embrace and that the administration could embrace?
Well, I think educating the public has been our biggest downfall, and that's, and just like Jane said, that's what we do best, and I don't feel like that we've done that. And we had a plan, and I didn't feel like we set the bar, and the plan didn't go in place. It got rushed, therefore, and I, like I said, I was very shocked the day I was told about it. I didn't like the rush, and I think you can't do that to the community, and it was done to me on the Board. So I didn't, I didn't, it's hard to get behind that. I think we have to take our, not take our time, we need to find out what the status is on the land that we promised that we would sell off, that we're not going to use. We need to prom, you know, we need to check, we need to know all these things, and we need to prove the public that we are transparent, and I think we've got our work cut out for us, and we're, the ball is rolling, but we're not there yet to have, first of all, special elections. I couldn't get past that. For me, that was just, I couldn't get past spending a million dollars to fight for, on a risk, and that's a gamble. It wasn't a gamble that I was willing to take, and that's where I stand. The reason, and for me today, is, like I said, the missteps to get here. Now we're having an 8:00 in the morning meeting for a mistake that we should have known how our legislators were. We should have known what the county commissioners were going to do. I personally did know. I happened to got lucky. I had great secretaries that had me in John Manning's office, Hammond's office, and Pendergrass's office. They, all three told me, they have the option to put it on the ballot. They had the final say. I was like, "Holy cow. We don't even know that before we're making somebody have a May 15 election." So, yeah, I had a problem with it. I will support the Board and what y'all, the decision y'all make, and I'll gladly do that, but I personally, I'm going with what all my voters had told me, and they were against it, and that's where I'm at, at this point.
Dr. Cuckle?
But, but the decision today is to change it, not whether to, to bring the sales tax forth, but to change it from the May election to the November election. Am I correct in that? So if we don't support it today, we're still on the May election, so it's not whether to do it or not, but whether to move it from May to November. And so I think we, that...
But that was, that's a combo motion, because you're asking for two things. You're asking to resend it, take it off of May, and then put it on November. I didn't vote for May to begin with, so I'm not going to vote for it to put it on November.
Okay. Other comments? Well, I'm supporting the superintendent's recommendation, and I really can't add anything to what my fellow Board members have said. I think they've articulated very clearly what our situation is and what our dilemma is. So, seeing no other discussion, I will call for the vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like sign.
Aye.
One. The motion passes 5-1. Okay, time for Board member comments. I'll start with Ms. Fisher.
I have no further comments this morning. Thank you.
And I just want to say that I will support the Board's decision, because it is a Board's decision, so you have my support.
Thank you. Ms. Patrica?
Thank you.
Mr. Toyber?
I have none.
Dr. Cuckle? And I have none. Mr. Martin?
None, thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Atkins?
No comment.
Okay, the next scheduled meeting of the Board is Tuesday, February 13th, a board briefing meeting scheduled for 2:00 p.m., and a board action meeting scheduled at 6:00 p.m. At this point, having no other business to come before this Board, I will entertain a motion for adjournment. So moved. Mrs. Fisher, seconded by Mrs. Patrica. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries 6-0.